2024 Oak Ridge Town Council Meeting to Order. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. I'd like to call the May 2nd Oak Ridge Town Hall Town Council Meeting to Order. We have the distinct pleasure and privilege of having Representative Faircloth here to give the invocation. He's been a true friend of the town and a true friend of the state, and so I'd like to welcome Representative Faircloth to give the invocation. Stand as you're able.
Thank you, sir. I thank you tonight, God, for these, your servants, mayor, city manager, city staff, city council members. I give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of you here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, oh God, in your love and peace. Help us, Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. May we lean on your everlasting arms. Amen.
Fudge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our rule.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Next item is approval of the minutes of the April 4th and March 11th special call meeting. Is there a motion to approve both?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Next item is resolution proclamation announcements. Again, we have the distinct privilege of having Representative Faircloth here to present us with a flag that was flown over the state Capitol in honor of Oak Ridge's 25th anniversary by, again, sponsored by Representative John Faircloth. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. I have actually two things to present if I might. The first is a group of folks that I spend a lot of time with, and it's all the rest of my fellows and gals down in Raleigh who are making laws that affect you. And I talked to them and I told them what I was going to do to come up here and visit you. And so I got them together and they have put something here that I'd like to leave with you. The state of North Carolina, I'd be at known to all that the House of Representatives of the North Carolina General Assembly sends congratulations to Oak Ridge, North Carolina, Guilford County in recognition of their 25th anniversary celebration, the second day of May in the year 2024. Signed by John Faircloth, North Carolina House of Representatives, 62nd House District, Guilford County. And I present that to you for what you might use it for.
Thank you, sir.
And I hate to take up so much of your time, but...
No, take your time. We're just pleased to have you here.
Mr. Mayor, could we invite Chair of the Special Events Committee forward since she was the one who invited this and led our 25th anniversary celebration?
That'd be great. Patty, would you mind coming up?
We have many people that visit us down there on business and history and so forth. And one of the things that they very often ask about is they pointed the flag on the building and say, how can we get one of those? And so somebody close to you here asked that question, how can we get one of those? And I'm telling you how to get it. You just ask me, and I go down the hall and I pick out the thing that I want to have something done. And I took this map up. I said, that's a pretty USA brand new map. And so they said it can't go anywhere brand new. It has to be, it has to fly over the building. So we flew it over the building and it flew over and it came back and landed at my hands. And they said, take it to those good folks up there and tell them we like them down here and we're going to do the best we can for them. And I told them I've been trying to do that for a long time. So I'm glad to be here with you tonight. And the flag is here for you to do with as you see fit. And we're probably going to be visiting each other in the next few weeks as we go through the budget. Don't get too excited now. When I say budget, you know, it's like when the, when you have a teenager that goes in and says, Dad, I need $15. And then the next night he comes in and says, Dad, I need $10. Well, we are somewhat like that. We gave out about $15 or a little more last time around in millions. And when you give a lot of it away, it's not there for the next time around. But I won't forget you. I'm not going to be leaving down there until the end of the year. And I'll certainly spend some time with you and your wonderful town here before I finish up. Appreciate you so much.
Mr. Representative Faircloth, let me infer on you a little bit, maybe take a couple, quick couple pictures?
Do you want to go forward?
Yeah, let's go up front here and maybe we can sky again here and Patty.
Why don't she go in the middle, Representative Faircloth? Please? Perfect. Thank you.
That's too many sides. They're all bad.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking time to visit with us. Next item is report from the Guilford County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, council. I'm Sergeant Seals of the Guilford County Sheriff's Office. I oversee the Detective Division with the Sheriff's Office for Northwest Guilford County, which encompasses Oak Ridge, Summerfield, Stokesdale, and all the incorporated areas around. For the month of April, for the township, we received 118 calls for service in town limits and resulting in nine formal case reports. The major incidents we've been dealing with is car break-ins. This is a pattern that happens once every year. When the weather starts to get better, we have more people go into our area parks, and we're seeing that people are getting their windows smashed as people come in and go for purses and wallets and things like that. We took, we've taken two, actually three so far this month at Oak Ridge Town Park on the 15th and the 28th, excuse me, just two. Then we had one on the Cascade Reserve Trail just outside of town limits on the 19th, and that's in addition to the two that we took on March 2nd and 14th. Each and every one of these involved windows getting smashed and purses being taken. This is commonly known as the felony lane gang. This group formed in Florida in the late 1990s. Groups of thieves will come up, they will organize and steal purses and wallets, and then they will impersonate the victims in bank teller lines. And they will impersonate victim A for who they have her ID to impersonate, to try to cash a check stolen from victim B and try to get money by fooling bank tellers with wigs and makeup and all kinds of elaborate schemes. It's nonstop and they continue to get more creative every, each and every year. The recent spree that we've seen are, we've made some headway in the investigations and of course, they're from out of state. We're finding they're coming into town for a couple of days at a time, and they will move on to the next township. And they will move up and down the East Coast, they'll lay their heads for a few months, they will come back. So what are we doing about it with the Sheriff's Office? We are dedicating all of our resources to addressing these car break-ins. My detectives have been out on the road every day almost for the past two weeks looking to put a stop to these. Our patrol officers have been circulating our parks every chance that they get between calls. But we need your help. We need for everyone that visits the park in Northwest Guilford County to please do not bring your, or bring your purse or wallet with you and leave it in your vehicle. If you do, take it with, or if you bring it to the park with you, take it with you. As you're doing your exercise, carry the, bear essentials with you or leave it in your trunk before you leave the house. Again, we are increasing our investigative efforts and patrol efforts at our area parks. This is nothing unique to Oak Ridge. Don't feel like you guys are doing anything wrong. Our residents are not doing anything wrong. This is a crime of opportunity from a group of hooligans that are coming in to do what they can do to ruin people's lives. All right? If there's any questions for me, I'll be more than welcome to take them.
And the key point is you saying this is a countywide issue. It's not, it's not localized.
What we're seeing typically is when we get hit, Greensboro's getting hit, Forsyth County's getting hit, Randolph County's getting hit, Rockingham County's getting hit. And the very difficult part for us is it's not like we're having one person going around like we typically will breaking into houses. It's when we get an investigative lead, it ends up being a different person on video. It ends up being a different vehicle on video. So it's not very predictable establishing any kind of pattern or going after any particular person because usually they're not using their own vehicle. They're using a rental car. So rental cars, they switch them quickly, change tag numbers, things like that. So it's, I can say that it is probably one of the more frustrating series of crimes to have to investigate. I've been doing this for about 10 years on the investigative side. And my group of detectives, they do an outstanding job. We've solved several of these crews over the last three or four years, but it's just, just maddening. So we, people I say all the time when we tell them to lock their car doors, take their valuables with them and things like that, well, you're just doing this to scare us. We're not doing this to scare anybody. It's, we're trying to educate people to make smart decisions and protect your valuables and, and have a good day.
So the biggest thing we can do to help you really is to not leave anything valuable out in sight.
Absolutely.
And the key point is not to go put it in the trunk while you're at the park because they're watching you do that.
They are. So if you're going to bring your purse with you, you need to go to the grocery store after you go to the park. We suggest putting it in your trunk before you leave the house. Have your phone, have your license with you if you need that information if you get pulled over on your way to the park or anything like that. But yeah, they, we have seen groups that will scout, they will do surveillance and look for people doing that. These guys are very good at what they do. And they are continuingly to change, continuing to change their methods and they're learning things as we make charges on them. They're getting our cases in discovery figuring, hey, how did we get caught? So let's not do that again. So they're continuing to educate themselves on what, how to present themselves from getting caught.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you for your service.
Next, we have the report from the Oak Ridge Fire Department.
Good evening. My name is Captain Hill with Oak Ridge Fire Department. For the month of April, we're reporting that we ran 66 total calls. We did have 624 hours of training. We also like to report that our new training facility is now open and operational. The chief is working on setting up a day where the community can come in and see it, walk through it. That has not been set up yet, but he is working on that currently. And you know, our monthly message right now with the weather being dry, everybody, everybody's talking about outside fires. Actually, I've been on one for three hours today. So just if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a fire outside, don't leave it unattended. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be, do my best to answer them.
Thank you. Well, actually, if we want to burn outside, we're supposed to sign up for a burn permit, aren't we?
Yes, we do still have burn permits that we will issue you, but it's still, I mean, you gotta understand it's very dry and it's still windy, so don't leave it unattended.
Did I hear someone down here might want to ask something? I thought I heard a voice that, anyone else?
Thank you for your service on that fire today on 68.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. We have next is a public hearing, public trail easement closing, a public here for the purpose of giving consideration to the closing of a public trail easement in the Ashford subdivision. If we are correct, the developer and his lawyer has asked for us to continue this to June. Is that correct? So with that, we need a motion if there's no, if that is agreement. Is there a motion to continue this to June?
So moved.
There a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, carried. Did you want to add anything to that?
Well, I was going to suggest to, to name the actual date, June the 6th. You're taking it to your next council meeting, but just for absolute clarity for anyone that, that...
I'll amend my motion to say I move to continue the hearing to our next regularly scheduled town council meeting on June 6th.
Second. Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. So again, it'll be held at our next meeting. Public comment. This is an opportunity for you to have three minutes where you can talk about anything you'd like. Just state your name and address, raise your hand and be recognized and the floor will be yours. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Lindsay Clark, 6816 Koala Drive. I'd like to share some thoughts on the ongoing dispute over efforts to remove the public trail easement from the Ashford neighborhood plat. First to provide background to anyone unfamiliar with the situation, the day before the Ashford preliminary plat review by Planning and Zoning, a Mountains to Sea Trail member, a committee that doesn't have any authority or ordinance, proposed a public trail easement through the neighborhood. The next day, Planning and Zoning approved the preliminary plat without the easement, but asked the developer for this trail easement, even though the authority for town trail siting and planning lies with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. After a long process of town staff apparently strongly encouraging and persuading, their words, the developer put the easement on the final plat and the town staff approved it. However, it is my understanding that it is breach of ordinance to have the easement on the final plat without appearing on the preliminary plat, since that is an ordinance requirement. Furthermore, the easement on the final plat should be considered a substantial change requiring a review by Planning and Zoning prior to final plat approval because Oak Ridge has failed to define acceptable minor modifications that may be approved by staff in accordance with state law. The absence of the easement on the preliminary plat and the failure to secure review by Planning and Zoning of the final plat prior to approval are clear breaches of ordinance and call for a revocation of final plat approval per statute. I have brought this along with related misdeeds to the attention of the town manager and mayor in hopes of expeding resolution as I consider this final plat to be illegitimate. Trust in our town government is paramount when it comes to the best interests of the residents. I assume that the events leading to the approval of the Ashford final plat with the trail easement is unique and is not and should not be representative of our trail system in Oak Ridge. I also understand that other town residents are benevolently working with the Mountain to Sea Trail on an alternate route. However, those efforts should not be conflated with any legal or ethical obligation of remediating the issues described. Lastly, the situation that I found myself in as a neighbor directly adjacent to this proposed public trail easement prompts me to also request that the town council consider defining in detail certain restrictions on public easements as an ordinance. For example, a minimum width allowed regardless of zoning district and a minimum setback from neighboring properties and any other regulations identified for the benefit of public interest. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Goebel, 1402 West Ridge Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. First thing I want to do is I want to buy a paver. So I don't know who to give this to, but at the end I'll give it to somebody so we can get a paver for my family. The second thing is I want to thank the people of Oak Ridge. I collected 3,500 signatures to get my name on the ballot as an independent and unaffiliated. And it was the people of Oak Ridge that helped me do that. And I want to thank them. People ask me, what was it like? And it was one of the hardest things I've ever done, standing outside a grocery store is going door to door. I know what it's like when somebody comes to my door unannounced. It's difficult. But I got to meet 3,500 people and I got to talk to them and said, what's important to you? And what I found out was they didn't care about a D, Democrat, or an R, Republican. They cared about the kids. And so I'm running for the kids. And so I've learned a lot by doing that. The next thing is I'm ready for the campaign. The campaign has started. We haven't had a fundraiser yet, but we've raised $25,000 with pledges of another 25. And we're going to have three fundraisers later in the year too are already planned. In fact, this week, someone donated a billboard, two billboards for me and it's already started running. So the support I'm getting from the community without really pushing it is unbelievable. And I want to thank the people of Oak Ridge and the people of this, this organization because of the support you've given me. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, so we'll close that out. Next, we'll move on to the town manager report. The floor is yours, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. Short report this evening. The first and only, although I would like to add an update to Heritage Farm Park after my first agenda item, a consideration to approve the reappointment of Jason Streak to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Hey, there is there a motion to approve or deny the reappointment of Jason Streak to the Planning and Zoning Board?
Make the motion that we approve Jason Streak, Planning and Zoning Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, carried. And you have an update on the Heritage Farm Park?
I just wanted to report to everyone that who was invited should have received an email. And we've done outreach on every avenue that we can think of to announce that the grand opening that was scheduled for Saturday has been postponed due to the weather. I do want to say that we are grateful to the town staff and to Barr and to the volunteers that were organizing that pulled out all the stops to have the park ready for this event on Saturday. I know it's a disappointment to everyone that worked extra hard and put in extra hours to, to get the, the new park in good shape. But we're confident that that extra time will, will clean up some loose ends as well as hope for, for better weather. So the park is looking fantastic and we're excited to show it off when we've got a beautiful day to do it.
I understand we do have power now, though.
We do. We do. That was a big if. But yes, power came in today and some final inspections will be happening tomorrow. So things have really moved along well.
Excellent. Okay, anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Well, you're still on deck. So new business, presentation of the fiscal year 2024, 25 year budget. I believe that's yours.
Yes, thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to present the draft budget for your consideration. This is the public unveiling of the proposed budget. The budget will be available for review and comment for 30 days. Public hearing is scheduled in June, on June the 6th, at which point the council can take up consideration of the budget. I'll briefly read my statement just as an introduction. The budget was prepared with considerable input as per every year and oversight from the Finance Committee and from our finance officer, Mr. Anders, as well as input from various committees and town citizens. Three meetings of the Finance Committee concluded with a favorable recommendation to the town council. The, the report that I'm presenting this evening is in the form of a recommended budget. It's in the proper form for budgetary adoption and has been verified as to accuracy and completeness. The proposed fiscal year 24, 25 budget reflects the town's ongoing commitment to providing the services and amenities demanded by an active and growing population in a fiscally responsible manner. Over the last 25 years, the town has experienced steady if modest revenue growth, which is a trend projected to continue in the next fiscal year. Several large capital construction projects are wrapping up, including the new Heritage Farm Park, while several other projects have been funded and are underway, including the Farmhouse Community Center and the Veterans Honor Green. We do have additional park staff proposed in the next budget year to handle the additional maintenance and administration of these two new facilities. maintenance and administration of these two new facilities. Development of the town of Oak Ridge water system will continue in fiscal year 24-25, including the anticipated construction of a 250,000 gallon elevated water storage tank and a 3.2 mile water line to connect the elevated tank to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utility System. Both of these projects will be budgeted under separate capital project ordinances, and just a reminder that both projects are fully funded by federal, state, and county grants. Several smaller capital projects are budgeted, also budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year. Implementation of the Town Park Entrance Master Plan will improve the appearance and functionality of the grounds surrounding the Farmhouse Community Center. Construction of the second phase of the Veterans Honor Green will complete the full vision of the Special Events Committee and will be augmented by additional donations. Funding for trails and design and engineering for new sidewalks is also included in the budget. Also, we'll continue the subsidy program for the Oak Ridge Youth Association, continue to fund the Music in the Park series, and other popular annual events such as Ridge Fest, Light Up the Night, Heritage Day, and others. The budget also supports staff, as they continue to provide exceptional service and guidance to the town's 13 standing boards and committees, as well as other project-specific working groups, consultants, and contractors. To help us maintain exceptional park facilities, provide outstanding citizen service, and to manage the increasingly demanding day-to-day responsibilities of a growing town. On the revenue side, through steady and well-planned growth, the town anticipates a 4.5% increase in revenues, which includes property and sales tax collections, interest earnings, and ABC revenue, as well as other formula-based state distributions. Grant revenue of over $8 million will be allocated to the water projects that I mentioned earlier. Revenue increases are offset by a 9.5% increase in operating expenses, and primarily, I attribute those to personnel and operations for the new park facilities, but also increasing administrative responsibilities for staff and our contracted consultants. All expenses have been researched and vetted by the Finance Committee, and all income has been conservatively estimated, after due consideration of all the input that we get from the state and county sources and our, and our conservative Finance Officer, who has established that practice successfully for 25 budget years. The 24-25 recommended budget proposes no change to the property tax rate of 8 cents, which was adopted in 2017. Even though we have a couple of major projects on the horizon, growing administrative and operational responsibilities, the budget does anticipate a fund balance in excess of $2 million at the end of the fiscal year. This year's proposed budget therefore maintains the current tax rate, funds these initiatives, and also maintains adequate reserves. The budget message and attachments will be available for the public to review after this meeting. We'll have paper copies here at Town Hall, and we'll also have copies available on the website for review. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe representatives in the Finance Committee, including the Chair, are here this evening as well.
Okay. Mr. Greason, you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Stone?
No questions.
Mr. Harden?
No questions.
Ms. Snyder?
No questions, thank you.
No, none for me right now. We'll have probably a couple more next month. Next month, very understanding, it is a public hearing, which means the public is welcome to have input. I would highly recommend, though, you review the budget in the meantime, and if you have any questions, contact anyone from council, anyone from staff. They probably can answer your questions a bit easier than maybe during the public hearing. If nothing else, be better prepared to make your comments during the public hearing. But I also want to remind you, the Finance Committee meetings were all public, the, and it's made up of citizens. They do a basically zero, zero sum, zero-based budget where they work up from everything, and they do a very good job of really looking into things. But I can't emphasize enough, if you're interested in the budget, take a look at it after it's online tonight, and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask them before next month's meeting. So any other comments? Anything else? Okay. Next item, consideration approval of Village Woods conveyance agreement.
In your packets is a agreement for the purchase and sale of assets for the purpose of conveying the Village Woods water system to the town. This has been a topic in front of the Water Advisory Committee for several months. They have reviewed this document, recommends that council approve the agreement, but requests that prior to a vote, council convene a special call meeting for the purpose of participating in a water workshop to discuss this and other municipal water initiatives. I'll go through a few of the highlights of the document, happy to answer questions, but again, the recommendation from the committee is to give an opportunity for the council to take a deeper dive at a, at a special call meeting.
Okay.
Under the terms of the agreement, the town would acquire all the assets of the community well and distribution system of the Village Woods water system for the price of $1. This would include all fixtures, equipment, improvements, but not any of the water lines from the meter into the, of course, into the private residences. The agreement is modeled after the agreement that we used to acquire the Honeycut Reserve System. It's been reviewed and approved as to legal form by Mr. Thomas. If approved, the town would charge the municipal rate of $24 a month plus 7.50 per 1,000 gallons to residents of Village Woods. This is the same rate that the residents currently pay, because they set their own rates based on the town rates. It's also the rate that's applied to all water customers in Oak Ridge, which right now consists solely of the Honeycut Reserve System. We did make our, when we modeled the takeover and construction of community well systems, we modeled it based on the notion that 30 connections would provide a break-even point. Village Woods at Build Out will have 20 connections total, so taken individually, it will cost more to operate than we will receive in revenue. The strategy that the Water Advisory Committee has recommended, and, and one that we've talked about as we were putting this proposal together, is that as you continue to build your customer base, you add larger systems along with smaller systems, your portfolio essentially expands, and the, the larger developments help to make up for some of the revenue shortfalls in some of the smaller developments. So at Build Out, Honeycut Reserve and Village Woods together will see an annual net revenue over expenses of roughly $25,000 a year. And that money would put, be put back into the enterprise fund for contingency and development of the reserve. All of the equipment, including the wellhouse and the water lines, have been inspected by EnviroLink, who's our contracted water service provider. All deemed to be in good condition, all lines are adequately sized, the well pump is in good shape. The agreement does allow for an additional period of due diligence prior to closing, in which the town can investigate further. If there is any reason whatsoever that the town would, would want to withdraw from the agreement, we are allowed to do that without penalty. So again, approving the agreement doesn't necessarily lock us into the purchase if we conduct additional due diligence and find something that would cause us to have pause. So again, I'll note that the Water Advisor Committee supports the, accepting the conveyance of this water system, but would like to discuss it further with council prior to a vote.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're basically asking us to call for a special call meeting to really dig into this?
That, that would be the recommendation of the committee, yes.
All right. Mr. Harden?
As a liaison from council, I was at the meeting. I think there was a unanimous view that there's inconsistent knowledge about water between all of us on council. Some, some of us have been following the water issue for years and years. Some of us, just a couple of years, some of us have, have had very little involvement. So we thought that an education structure to make sure that everybody has this same understanding would be a good thing for the future, not just for Village Woods, but for the future as we get the opportunity to buy other water systems in the, in the town. So that was where that recommendation was, and I fully support it.
Even though it's a special call meeting, they are open to the public, so this is an opportunity for the public to become better educated about how the water system's gonna run, too. So there's that side, side benefit there. Any other comments before we start talking about asking for a special call meeting? And then if you like, we can, we can actually talk about the conveyance agreement now if you'd like to. Is there a motion that we have a special call meeting?
Submoved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So of course, the next hurdle is finding a mutually agreeable time that we can all meet. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this before we leave this topic? Okay.
I, I, just one additional comment, Mayor. As we have the opportunity to buy these water systems, what we're, you know, that, that is a current action. Again, as Bill said, we're buying an asset for a dollar, but we're actually buying a customer base, not only for today, but for the future. And we've had in this, in these council meetings, discussions about asking for support on engineering for a commercial loop, the second phase, to go down 68 Linville Road. So eventually, assuming that occurs, and I don't have a timeframe, nobody's got a timeframe for that, we've just asked for money to do the engineering work, so we're shovel-ready. But looking long-term, here is a, a customer base at Village Woods, that if that commercially becomes viable, then there's a, a base of customers available to the town to connect our growing municipal system to it, and then we can, we can hook them up as soon as, as soon as, as soon as they want to, and as soon as, as soon as the commercial loop is feasible and, and working order.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to consideration approval of contract for park security system. Would you introduce that also, please?
Yes, also, in your packets is a proposal, actually from, it's a four-part proposal, to provide a security camera system at the town park. Timing was interesting to hear. The Sergeant Seals mentioned the, the break-ins that have occurred at the town park facility. That's what spurred this discussion originally. So we've taken time to do some due diligence and confer with the Sheriff's Department as to what types of systems are helpful to them. We've had the good fortune of having co-chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, Adrian Eckenrod, lend us his expertise in this, in this field to help us to draft a request for proposals and to review those proposals. And what you have in front of you this evening is a request for a camera, security camera system and the associated Wi-Fi improvements and other infrastructure, including electrical, to provide eight specialty cameras that will serve as license plate readers, two at each of the entrances to all of our park facilities. So that's both entrances at the Lisa Drive entrance to Town Park, the entrance to the Town Park at, on the Linville Road parking area, and then the entrance to Heritage Farm Park. And then four dome cameras that would provide coverage aerially of those same areas. And like I said, in addition, we will need to improve our Wi-Fi coverage, because the cameras will communicate with our server via Wi-Fi. That's a benefit not only to the security system, but to the park in general. It will provide additional coverage in Town Park and Heritage Farm Park, which we currently do not have Wi-Fi coverage. And then the additional electrical needed to service those new installations. The total request is $71,210. And as part of this request, staff does request a 10% contingency, because there are several costs that we still don't know. We are reasonably confident that we can get within that contingency. If not, then I would bring those proposals back to Town Council. It's at council's pleasure. If you are, would like us to move forward, we can do that with the contingency. If not, we're prepared to bring back more additional information to council in more detail next month.
Right. The, the only concerns I have is that council's only had these numbers for less than a week.
Understood.
So I'd be very much in favor of just, we can discuss it, but I'd be very much in favor of us continuing this until next month, which would give us the opportunity to get those additional figures, but also give time for council to fully digest the numbers and, and understand them, and from there. So like I said, that's my comment. Other comments, suggestions?
I, I think we should move forward on this. I think the work is excellent. It's, it's presented clearly. We have a resident expert in Mr. Eckenrod, and it's been fully vetted by our Parks and Rec Committee. I saw a demo of it. It's fantastic. I, so I vote for moving forward because of the warm weather and the Detective Seals mentioned, the sooner we can get this done, the better it is for our residents. Because as the warm weather continues, there are more park visitors, but there are more criminals also. We've heard from residents about this for years, and from the sheriff's office as well. And last year, we asked the county to help us pay for the cameras that they recommended, and they came through in a big way, and we have the money in hand. So I think at this point, I trust our staff and I trust the proposals that have been put together. I think with this money in hand, we can make a real difference for residents. Let's just, let's just do the right thing for the safety of our citizens tonight and see our way clear to vote yes on this proposal.
Mr. Harden, you have any comments?
So if I heard you correctly, the additional information on, 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 on the money required would fall within the, I think it's 10% contingency. Do you have a more specific number? Is that 5,000 or 7,000?
I don't, because we're still waiting for those quotes. We don't anticipate it would be more than that. In fact, that's, we've cushioned it, because we don't believe it will be that much. But again, like I said, if council makes the motion to cap that contingency, of course, we'd, we'd bring it back to council if it ends up being more than that.
Okay. Based on that, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward as well.
Mr. Greason, any initial comments?
You know, I think we should just wait until we get the price. Was it gonna be another week or so, two weeks? I don't know. How long, how long have, have they been working on getting us this price? That's my question.
It, it's been several weeks of, of working with the, the contractors to get those costs. So I, I don't know. I, I hope it wouldn't be longer than that.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah, I'm of the opinion that we need to delay this till the next council meeting. Doing the right thing includes taking care of the taxpayers' money, and we just can't afford to approve things off of ideas. We need solid numbers. Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest that we delay this and do it right.
Again, my main concern is, one, I don't think anyone's saying we don't want to do the project. The council's only had a couple of days to actually dig into the numbers and actually look at the numbers, I think is one aspect. The other thing is, there's five different contractors involved here, and we haven't gotten the, the bid back from the final contractor. And nothing's gonna happen until we get those final numbers anyway. So the time difference, I don't believe is gonna be dramatically different if we were to hold this off. If we hold our special call meeting for water, and this information is ready, we can add that to our special call meeting, as long as we know about a week, what, we can advance for special call meetings, we have to set the agenda. So I don't believe the execution of installing the cameras is gonna be dramatically different if we continue this until we had all the information, also so that we had enough time to give to council, so that they can fully digest the numbers and, and evaluate it. So, so I'm definitely in favor of saying, let's continue this until we have complete package to look at, and also the council's had time to, to look at it completely. So go ahead, Ms. Snyder.
Oh, I, I have a question. I, I understood from Deputy Clerk Royals that this project would be finished if we approved it tonight by, before the end of the year, and I'm concerned, you know, that's the middle of the summer, basically. Well, I guess technically it's not, but it's the middle of most people's time off. I'm worried that this would delay it by a month. I did hear from Mr. Eckenrod earlier tonight that we could start on a portion of this project that's ready to go, which is the, is it the Wi-Fi? No, it's the, the networking side. Thank you. Thank you. That's another option, Council, that we could go forward with the networking side. I do think there's a loss to our citizens in waiting on this. I, I'm not sure if we're, I, I sort of hear that we're not trusting our staff to come up with these numbers. You know, the, the amount of money we're talking about within the contingency is less than $7,000. That's well within the town manager's purview to approve, and obviously would not be recommended or approved by staff unless it was exactly what was needed for the project. So, again, I, I trust our staff to move forward on this.
Any inference that, that there's any distrust of staff is completely baseless. What I am, my main concern is, is that I've only had four or five days to look at this. We should have more time to look at this. I have no doubt that this is a well-researched project, that staff has done an excellent job of looking at the numbers. I have absolutely no, no concern, no concern there whatsoever. That this project has taken a long time. It's not going to, the fact that it may take an extra two or three weeks to get everything together is not going to be a material difference. I question that it's actually going to get done that quickly, because there's lots of pieces to go into it. Does all the, do all the vendors have all the components? One of the biggest problems we had with the sound system in the conference room was getting the equipment ordered. So, again, would the, would the, all the, all the suppliers be in line to have all the equipment? So, I think we've all made our points. What I'd like to do is ask for a motion to either approve this, or continue it, or some other action. So, is there a motion? I'll make a motion then that we continue this until the package is complete, and hopefully we'll see it next month at our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries through to you two. Thank you. Consideration approval of core grant recommendations from Conservation Easement Committee.
Good evening. Stephanie Farrell, 5839 Billlett Road. So, last month, I stood up here, and we talked about the Conservation Easement Committee. And one of the slides that I showed you was the process for awarding a core grant from the Core Grant Initiative. So, we are now in the part of the process where we've received applications, we've vetted the applications, we've talked to our partnering organizations, Preservation North Carolina and Piedmont Land Conservancy, and we have received their numbers back for how much it costs for a core grant for putting conservation easements on two different applications. And so, we've, we have reviewed those numbers and their feedback, and we've reached the point of the process where we are ready to move forward with providing our input on those applications. So, I'd like to start with our first application, because also last month, I talked about the two applicants. One was a historic structure, and one was open space. So, the first applicant is the Sanders Blaylock House, and the Sanders Blaylock House is located at 1815 Oak Ridge Road in Oak Ridge. It is owned by Terry Hammond and Roy Nyedorf. And so, it was built in, Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, I say 1815, but I don't think that's right. But it's one of the oldest homes in Oak Ridge. It has significant historical, it has significant historical meaning to this town, and it was part of a large, a large farm that was most of Oak Ridge. So, part of the criteria that we evaluated in terms of this grant was the significance of the property, and yes, we found that it was significant to Oak Ridge. Did it lack the, the protection of the historic district, or was it in danger of demolition or other physical jeopardy? And yes, we determined it sits outside the historic district, and it is in an area that has seen high growth in recent years. The property adjacent to it is currently undeveloped, but it's a desirable target for developers in the future, and it could impact this property if it's not protected. The lot on which it sits and the two adjacent lots make up more than three acres. Plus, it's not only the size of the lot and the house that's significant, but the condition of the house with many of the original features that are still intact and significant as well. So, Preservation North Carolina has gotten back to us, and they have proposed that a grant in the amount, or the cost of the easement would be $7,526. That would be payable to Preservation North Carolina. So, taking into consideration all of the criteria and the significance of the property, the Conservation Easement Committee is recommending that we move forward with the award of this grant to Roy and Terry for protection of this property for perpetuity.
Okay. Questions? Now, this is just our portion of it. There are other fees that other, is this the only fee that's going to be attached to this grant?
Yes.
Or is it that the owner will have to pay other things, like a survey or anything like that?
This covers everything.
This covers everything? Okay. And this is a one-time thing?
Yes.
That's right.
If the owner chooses to do an appraisal, which I think they've talked about, that would be their responsibility, but that's also their choice, or to get legal advice.
Okay. So, go ahead, Mike, Mr. Stone.
Help me understand. So, the owner pays nothing on this?
Appraisal. They pay for, we pay the endowment and monitoring fee and their, and the recording fee.
How much was that?
The monitoring fee for this is $7,500, and then the recording fee is $26.
Okay. That's what the owner paid?
That's what the grant would cover, and we would pay that to Preservation North Carolina.
What I'm asking is, to get the conservation easement, what does the owner pay for?
So, the owner wouldn't?
No, they only pay their private costs of legal guidance and getting an appraisal. The whole point is that this is a very difficult and expensive process that most owners wouldn't consider on their own, but it's very good for the town. So, that's the point of these grants as, as presented last, last month.
And, Mr., Mr. Bruce, oh, go ahead.
Is you pulling microphone? Michael, your mic, your microphone?
Yes.
Normally, an owner who's granting something is responsible, say for a deed, to prepare it, and that's part of their cost. But in this case, because they're doing this good thing, Preservation North Carolina or its attorney will draw an easement instrument, right?
Yes.
And that's part of what I take it, the $7,000 is paying for, as well as being an ongoing monitoring offset. So, again, the owners are granting an easement. They're giving up something, because they're giving up part of their fee interest. Then, what I'm understanding is, they would be responsible to pay for an appraiser, or to get further legal advice if they wanted on the impact of this, but presumably they're satisfied. But they would have to get an appraisal in order to take the tax, to gain the tax benefit. In other words, the reduced fair market valuation, which is what this is about in terms of dollars and cents to the owner. And that's what they get out of it.
That, that's a good point. An easement typically reduces the value of the property, so the owner is giving up that, the difference between at the fair market value and at the decreased value with this restrictive easement in place.
Yeah, right.
Right, and that, as long as these folks still own the property, I think they can get a break on taxes because of the fair market value. They can argue it's, the value is down for taxing purposes. If they ever sell it, it is in perpetuity.
Yes.
To grant an easement. So, they would get less for it from the next owner, but the next owner would take subject to the easement. So, that's how these work.
And, Mr. Bruce, we have a certain amount of money in a fund for conservation easements. Would you kind of let everybody know that?
We, we have allocated $20,000 for the past three years, so there is $40,000 in a restricted fund, and an additional $20,000 in this year's budget for this program.
That would be starting in June, if the budget passes?
No, that's in this current fiscal year.
For this current fiscal year?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I, I was on the impression that the owner might have had a little more skin in the game.
Well, they're losing a significant portion of the value of their property. I think it's over 30%.
I understand that part, but like I said, they also get the benefit of while they're living there, I understand that future value. While they're living there, they pay less taxes. So, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not against this. I, I just think it needs to be a little clearer. You know, like I said, I, I was on the impression, like, especially when it comes to the land type of easements, that there'd be, that the owners would have a little more skin in the game. So, it's, it's just a concern I have, okay?
As I said, that is the skin in the game.
No, I understand it. We just need to make that a little clearer.
In perpetuity, they can't change that.
Right, I understand.
It was given back by this organization. And that is a significant hit typically on property value. And so, in, from a legal standpoint, point of view, it's, it's quite sufficient skin in the game.
Understand, understand. I, I just think that may, we might want to do a better job of explaining that, that's all. Any other questions on this, this particular thing? Is there a motion to approve the core easement, Conservation Easement Grant of $7,526?
So moved. I'd like to move to award, approve the award of the core grant in the amount of $7,526 to establish a conservation easement for Mr. Roy Nyedorf and Ms. Teresa Hammond's property at 1815 Oak Ridge Road.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Mr. Greason? Mr. Stone?
Yep.
Mr. Harden? Ms. Snyder?
No, I just, I think this is, this is a valuable program. I'm excited to see it come to fruition with this very important property, especially in May, which is Preservation Month. So, this is, this is a great opportunity to fund these grants and to build on our town's longstanding commitment to preserving our rural and historic roots, even as we continue to develop and grow.
Okay. And like I said, I think as we get more familiar with this, it'll be easier. And now, you have a second one?
I do.
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Second one.
The second core grant application is for a property owned by Jack Blaylock. It's located at 2120 Beeson Road in Oak Ridge. This parcel is the last remaining significant intact acreage of the Thomas Land Blaylock farm that originally contained more than 400 acres. Mr. Jack Blaylock submitted application for a core grant indicating that he would like to place the property under a conservation easement for open space. He's a longtime resident of Oak Ridge and would like to see the land preserved and remain undeveloped. We, the Conservation Easement Committee reviewed, reviewed his application according to eligibility criteria set forth by the committee. So, we looked at the significance of the property's natural features. We found that it were, that they were significant, the level of the need of conservation easement protection for the property, and it is also located in an area in Oak Ridge that is especially attractive for development. It is visible to the public by, from Highway 50, and it does have, he has also agreed to public access to the property for trail easements and perhaps even a trailhead. The size of the property at 17 acres is also a significant amount of open space. So, we worked with Preservation, I'm sorry, Piedmont Land Conservancy on this particular application to get the, a cost for a core grant, and the total cost, which you can see broken down on the memo, would be $18,000 and $18,050. And as I mentioned in the presentation last week, open space easements are more expensive than historic preservation easements. So, this includes surveys and legal descriptions, baseline documentation reports, legal fees and recording costs, a recording fee, and then the stewardship endowment, which is the monitoring fee. Are there any questions?
You have estimate next to several of these ones, though. If we were to approve this, I would assume if the estimates come in lower, they won't, they'll give back whatever they, now if they come in higher, who's, who's going to pay for that?
It's, it's supposed to be saying not to exceed, not to exceed $18,050. So, and it wouldn't be paid out until after all the costs were determined, but it could not exceed that.
Okay, so, i- if it were to exceed $18,000, then the, the applicant would then be able to decide, I don't want to do this, and walk away?
I think we could revisit it at that time.
Well, I'm just asking what the option, so the option would be is, if, if it's more than $18,000, the, the applicant could say, no, I'm not going to make up the difference, or they could come back and ask for more, or we could just reject it.
Or the Piedmont Land Conservancy could donate the additional funds, is the most likely resolution of that.
If it comes in lower, what, then we don't have to pay? Right. We get back the difference. Okay, just make sure, I just want to make sure it's clear to everyone that, that this, as Ms. Snyder clarified, this is a not to exceed $18,050. There. Okay. Questions? Mr. Greason? No question. Mr. Stone?
A question.
Harden?
No question.
Ms. Snyder?
No, just, just to clarify. And it, it would not be paid out until all the costs have been expended by Piedmont Land Conservancy. So, there's, there's not a, there's not a scenario where they would have to give money back.
Okay.
And they would have to provide all the receipts, obviously.
All right. With that in mind, is there a motion to approve this accord easement grant?
I move that we approve the award of the core grant of up to $18,050 for a conservation easement on Mr. Jack Blaylock's property at 2120 Beeson Road, in order to preserve this open space for future generations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item I asked to be put on was consideration approval response request for funding from the Guilford County Schools, and I apologize, I did not bring a copy of the letter with me, but basically, there was a request from, thank you. Impression, perfect. There was a request from Deana Hayes and Betty Jenkins, the chairperson and vice chair of the Board of Education, to ask us to voluntarily contribute $30,384 in support of a tutoring program. I did poll Council to see what kind of support they would have for this type of thing. For various reasons, we have different reasons why we pretty much are not in favor of doing this. So, the main thing would be, one, to confirm that, that we are not really in favor of doing this, but also to give Council an opportunity to, to make their individual reasons for maybe not wanting to do this. But I would recommend that we make a very, very simple reply back to these, to the requesters, that this is a county responsibility, and the county has a responsibility of resolving this between the county and the Board of Education. Like I said, we all have different reasons, so I don't know that we can come up with a unified document that lists all those agreements in, in commonality. About the only thing I think we all agree on is that this is basically something that the county and the Board of Education should resolve. With that, I am open the floor for comments. Mr. Greason, do you have any comments on this?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah, there's not enough time to list the issues with this, so, no, no comments.
Mr. Harden?
My letter back to you indicated that I did not see in our strategic plan that this was anything that we've considered before, and it seemed to be, it seemed to be something that may have already been prioritized in the county, and this was an attempt to revive it. But that's, that's speculation on my part, but that was my reasons for declining.
Ms. Snyder?
Well, I, I'm glad we're in agreement. That's, that's a good thing. I do want to bring to everyone's attention that Chairman Alston signaled that this was coming last June. I forgot about it. You probably did too, if you paid any attention to it at all. But he, he had said at that time that he would organize a meeting of the area mayors to discuss exactly how towns and cities in Guilford County might help the school system, okay? No such meeting was organized, but I would definitely prefer an opportunity for, you know, the mayor or someone from this council to discuss the issues, rather than having to request. to respond to a request that arrived somewhat like an invoice, your balance due $30 some thousand dollars. Certainly, we would like more attention paid to our area schools, particularly the dire facilities at our high school and middle schools. I don't know why our schools are always the last to receive funding. The only response I've heard to that from school board members is that our students' academic performance is simply too good. That's a fail for me. But with all of that said, I think this is a strategic, I mean, we need to respond strategically. We are grateful to the county for past funding, including ARPA funds and last year's grant for security cameras, and we have a request into them now. So, and I did find out that other school board members weren't even aware of this, and I don't think the elementary school is aware of this. So this is really an issue between us and the county commissioners. And I see it as an opportunity to preserve our relationship with the county commissioners while also letting them know how we feel about this. So I would say that we need to express our appreciation for past funding and then explain how tight this year's budget is, that we can't just absorb $30,000 at this point in our budget process, and that our budget is focused on things that are clearly aligned with Chairman Austin's One Guilford Initiative, including our local infrastructure and our park. Then we would say, you know, it's really, we're not comfortable funding a program that we have no expertise in and no ability to have oversight over. We, you know, we don't even know if all of this money would go or stay at Oak Ridge Elementary. And then say, we would love to talk about future ways that we might support our school in ways that are more consistent with what we're in a position to provide, obviously at a much lower level. I think one or more of those points would help us couch our response that is, no, we can't fund this.
Like I said, I think in polling council, we all come from different points of view of why this doesn't make sense. I take slightly different, different take, and that's why I struggle with coming up with a unified response that goes into details of why we don't like this idea. My concern is that we aren't the Board of Education. The Board of Education is elected for this express purpose of determining whether they do a good job or not, that's a different story, but we elect the Board of Education to represent ourselves and fund our schools and properly manage those schools. I don't believe it's, the town's responsibility in any stretch of the imagination to decide which programs we should or shouldn't support, whether they're capital improvement programs, whether they're tutoring programs. The way we support those type programs is who we elect to the Board of Education and by talking to the Board of Education. I did speak with Mr. Logan this morning, and so that's where I think it should be. This, and the other concern I have is, is that if we started donating money, is it going to displace money? I mean, one of the common complaints about the lottery is it displaced money. It did not augment the money, it displaced it. So I'm concerned that if we start supporting a project, they're going to say, okay, well that project's funded, let's go find something else. We're not going to bother trying to fund that project. So I worry about displacement. I worry about if we are able to direct the money to be directed to the elementary school in our own town, that breaks the basic covenant of the county-level schools. The whole, I realize it's idealistic, but the whole idea behind the county school system is that all the schools should be relatively equal. I understand, we don't get proper funding, and that's wrong, but I believe we shouldn't augment that and encourage this uneven portion of money, because there's other school systems that don't have a town that's going to help them. So again, that's why I'm not in favor of this. This is a responsibility of the Board of Education and the county to deal with. We should not be augmenting that. We pay our taxes at county level. If they need more money, they need to convince us that they need to raise taxes or something, or they need to run the system more efficiently. But this is why I think we, again, listening to members of council up here, I don't believe we can come up with a unified message back to them of why we think this is a bad idea. I think basically, we're going to be limited to, this is not something we support, thank you very much, and we move on from there. So I'm open for people to come up with a different message, but like I said, I think we all come from different points of view, and I don't think we can come up with a unified list of reasons why this was a good idea, bad idea, or whatever. So that's where I stand. So, any other comments? With that in mind, like I said, I'd like to have support to just craft a one or two paragraph message back to the Board of Education, actually back to the chair and the chair, vice chair, to basically say, we're not, thank you, but no thank you. Mr. Thomas, you look like you're ready to say something.
I don't, I think, because it calls for formal action. I think the mayor on behalf of council can respond in a generalized manner on behalf of a consensus of the full council.
All right. Okay, well, in that case, is there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, instead of a vote, that makes sense.
All right. Is there support for me to craft a simple response that doesn't go into heavy details? I will circulate it, but I think that's where.
I just think we would be missing an opportunity to say that we're doing a lot for the county through our current budget for the One Guilford Initiative, because this is, this is coming straight from Skip Austin, even though it's signed by Deana Hayes. And I think if we provide absolutely no explanation, we're missing an opportunity and not building a relationship.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? Is there consensus then to draft a simple response?
Yes.
Port. Pardon?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Go ahead.
Okay. I will circulate it, and we'll go from there. Consideration approval or resolution are 2024-04 memorandum agreement with the North Carolina League of Municipalities for Grant Services. Thank you, back on the floor. Thank you.
This is a request to enter into a agreement with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, who has an ARPA-funded program to provide assistance to local municipalities on a number of different programs. The one in which the town is prepared to engage with them is on grant assistance. They have retained a consulting firm with expertise in government grants, Whit O'Brien's, and the program provides up to $30,000 in assistance to municipalities for services that are specifically outlined in Exhibit B, which is part of your attachment. And that includes grant research, grant application submittal, and grant award management. Two of the areas in which we've expressed interest in helping and having help with researching and applying for grants is in water infrastructure and in parks and recreation. So we would ask them to assist us in finding grants that the town would be eligible for. Again, this is a purely grant program of up to $30,000. If we find that it's a helpful service and council is interested in retaining Whit O'Brien's for additional work, that would be a separate process entirely, but we anticipate the assistance that they provide would be very helpful in finding appropriate grant resources for the town. So the action requested is to simply approve the resolution.
Exhibit A threw me a little bit.
Sorry?
Exhibit A threw me a little bit.
Well, there are, it's, it's a sort of a boilerplate resolution from the league, and there are multiple, there is a cybersecurity element to their grant program. There's a, there's another program that they also offer through this municipal accounting services. So this is simply their entire ARPA-funded program, but if you more specifically go back to Exhibit B, which is the last two pages of your, of your handout, that's where it explicitly says the description of services. Phase one, which is project identification, prioritization, available funding. Phase two, preparation of a grant application, and phase three, grant awards, award management.
I mean, I got there, but Exhibit A, when I first started reading Exhibit A, it kind of, okay.
They use the same contract for every municipality.
All right, sounds good. All right. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
Costs us nothing, correct?
Sorry?
This costs us nothing.
That's correct.
Correct. We get $30,000 worth of consulting services.
Consulting services.
To help find grants.
Right.
And it's grants that originally we were looking at water, but it's any kind of grant, if there's, we can, we could look at other grants, other grants other than just water. All right. So, is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding? Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, monthly financial update.
Pop, popper's still in, still offline.
Okay.
I need to surprise y'all one night and bring it. But financials for the month, had a fairly eventful month from an activity standpoint. We did a lot of wrap-up stuff with the park, and it's always a busy time of the year with budgeting and everything. But on the financials, we're holding 2.951 million in assets, current liabilities 52,000, other liabilities, net liabilities 66,000, and 2.885 million in fund balances, which you can see are broken down between that, that's committed at the top, various other restrictions, and then not committed at the bottom. For the month, we received revenues totaling $111,561. This was primarily, the biggest one-ticket item was the quarterly ABC distribution of Sales tax was at $29,123.73. So property taxes, they've pretty well gotten most of that in. The vast majority of our property tax we're receiving right now is on the motor vehicle collections. For expenses, normal operating expenses with the largest, of course, being outlays for the final phase of the park, payment number nine is what we're up to now. So, normal operations as we've had for several months, maintaining the cash balances are still at truest of $215,000, 2.1 million at Bank of Oak Ridge, and $144,000 at Piedmont Federal. Behind those reports are your details on income and expense, and of course, the income statement or statement of revenues is how I'm supposed to phrase this, has budget to actual. We will be modifying the budget in some small areas. We've got a few, if you look down through there, you'll see some percentages that look a little higher, but it's actually fairly small numbers. The only thing that we really had a 20% over budget on that we will, we will have to accept is the elections. This year, we had an election, and we actually got the bill this year. Inside joke, we have received those a year or two late. But I think probably the election cost more because of more voters and more population. So that's kind of the gist. We'll be doing some, coming forward with some modifications next month, with the month of June. I traditionally try to do final modifications for the June meeting and ask for authorization to modify through June 30th so that we stay within the balanced budget requirements. That's what we're kind of planning right now. Very insignificant amount of money in the grand scheme of things. For the month, the ACH wire transfer we just received was $2,602.83 for motor vehi, excuse me, for property tax, and $9,171.06 for motor vehicle. This $11,773 is total collections through April 30th. For the month, it was the sales and property tax like we normally have. Interest, we had a rather large planning and zoning fee received. ABC distributions, as I stated, was $45,000. Dog park fund donations, it was time for canine capers, so that's an annual uptick. Facility rental and special events at the park had rather significant receipts. Other park revenue and some donations to the Veterans Honor Green, phase two. The investments, as I stated, we're monitoring those, continuing to look for other approved options. Right now, we're fairly well in the sweeter spot on where rates are. I've had several people commenting in various fashions, whether it's clients, corporates, nonprofits. Everyone's noticed that the, the good interest rates are only there for about 18 months. Then the longer-term interest rates seem to be dropping. So we're monitoring that, going to keep our finger on the pulse. Staff support, again, we have grant compliance, ARPA, the SCIF, the CIP, finance committee, budget meetings, we're wrapping up. Budget ordinance preparation and work on the potential water system. One additional, with the completion of the park, we have started the process of working with the North Carolina League, our insurer, on getting insurance coverage, the materials that we had stored in the shop building, as I call it. Primarily Terry had, as I stated about Terry, he scored a really good savings for us in getting the tables, the garbage cans, the grills all ahead of time, broken down, we had them stored up there. Well, we got contents coverage. Now I'm in the process of dropping the contents coverage, and we're getting the coverage for everything that's above the insurable limit, which is $500. We're working with Ryan Azell at the State Legal Municipalities on that, and breaking down and getting the component cost, the bathrooms and various other large structures. But that's underway. I anticipate we'll probably have that done in the next few days. While y'all were having general stuff, I've been looking through a big pile of invoices. I've got to calculate the pieces and parts for the picnic shelters and the bathroom and et cetera. But overall, everything's going real well. League's been really good to work with on insurance. They, you know, once we, we actually took longer to get the repairs done at the Redmond House and the Canning House when the limbs came down, and the power was pulled off of the house there with Terry. It took longer to get the contractor lined up than it did for the insurance. They were actually asking us, we're ready, you know, please let us know we want to pay you. So the League's been extremely good about working with us over the years, and that's kind of one other thing that's kind of cropped up right now. But it's a good, it's good. We're getting ready to put the park online, so, and especially now that the power's online, we'll get everything rolling. But that's pretty much everything that I've got. Unless anyone has any questions, that's pretty much all my report for the month.
Okay, did you say, do you need a balancing?
No, I'll do that next month.
Next month you asked for a balancing one?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to accept the finance report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good job, as always. Thanks. All right. Committee reports, three minutes, planning and zoning.
Patty Passero, 8543 Linville Road. We met on 4/25 to discuss two subdivision plans. The Southern Pines Plan on Forsyth Road, which was pure RS40 in the ETJ, and they have applied to annex into Oak Ridge, had no questions and was approved without too much discussion. The Manderly Subdivision, which is in Oak Ridge on Oak Ridge Road and Harrell Road, had a whole lot of discussion, mainly because surrounding the new laws that went into effect regarding cul-de-sacs versus other permanent street alternatives. This didn't, is going to have a new turnaround rather than traditional cul-de-sacs due to the fact that the new plans call for 96-foot cul-de-sacs, which would cut into some lots, so they're going to put a, an end like the temporary butts that we used to have. And there's some concerns about that, because those tend to be someone's basketball court, someone's parking, private parking space, and then you can't turn around with emergency vehicles, you can't get deliveries down the street. So we, there's probably next month going to be something coming to y'all about. We've asked Sean to help us rewrite our ordinances, because without looking at our ordinances, we can't effectively look at that. So just wanted to put that on your radar, that next month you'll probably be looking at some, some changes or some recommendations that we make for our ordinances in planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mountain to Sea Trail Committee?
Putting on my trails hat now. Stephanie Farrell, 5839 Millet Road. The MST Committee met on Tuesday, April 30th, at the Town Hall. April was a busy month for trails in Oak Ridge. We held two workdays, both of which were focused on repairs and improvements on the Headwaters Trail. On the second workday, which was last Thursday, volunteers moved approximately 7,000 pounds of gravel to of gravel to a part of the trail that had gotten mucky. In addition to workdays, the MST Committee participated at Canine Capers, and we'd like to say a special thanks to the student ambassadors from the north, from Northwest High School for helping us with our, with, with that event. A special thanks goes to their advisor, Shawna Phelps, for helping to create a new poster that we can use at other events like this. I also wanted to take a second to let the council know that trails were actually, there was a lot of good PR about trails in Oak Ridge this week. Earlier this week, a popular hiker in North Carolina named Trail Marshall posted on Facebook, he has 56,000 followers on Facebook, and he posted a picture of the campsite sign down the street at the park, and he said, "This is my favorite sign along the Mountains to the Sea Trail. It's a beautiful park in Oak Ridge, North Carolina. The director of the park, Terry, is an awesome guy. Terry took care of me when I came through here, drove me into town so I could get some hot food, and is just an all-around amazing individual who takes pride in his job and does unbelievable work in maintaining and beautifying the area. Oak Ridge is a cool town, but this sign is cooler. It's always awesome when towns take care of hikers. The towns along the Mountains to Sea Trail are famous for it." I love the MST, so just wanted to put that out there. And then also, in today's news and record, yeah, news and record, there was a story about Selby Chapman, who was an Eagle Scout here in Oak Ridge, who did her Eagle Scout project on the trail. It's a beautiful overlook that overlooks one of the ponds on the Headwaters Trail. And the photo that they put in the paper was of her sitting on her project, and they noted that it was on the MST Trail in Oak Ridge. So, just wanted to get a chance to check it out, it's pretty cool. So, any questions?
Yeah, since, I think, the, where you put the gravel, was that where the, the washout and everything was?
It's before that, so it's before you get to that point.
Right.
It's a part where it's always been a little bit mucky.
Right, so it's not repairing any of the damage that?
No, not yet.
All right, thanks. You get to stay up there, I think.
Oh, um.
Conservation easement, you have anything you'd like to add?
I, I will say that we are talking to the owners of a historic landmark in Oak Ridge about a possible easement, and so that is another easement that might be coming. That would be a very important one for the town of Oak Ridge, and I'll just leave it at that.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Special events. Do you need an extra minute today, Patty?
Actually, veterans.
Okay.
Patty Dumchowski, 7320 Hidden View Drive. Goodness, good news this week from Bill Bruce, that construction will start on the Veterans Honor Green in June and hopefully, hopefully will be completed in September. We have total contributions of $950 for the month of April, bringing the Phase Two total to $12,050. We're all set for our Memorial Day ceremony here at Town Hall on Monday, May 27th at 10:00 a.m. I'm hoping that you'll all join us. Our speaker will be Chris Costelli. The committee continues to coordinate vendors and events for light of the night. It will be held on Saturday, December 7th. Any questions or comments?
It's even better news than you thought. The work is starting on May 6th, not June.
Oh, well, there you go. Monday, thank you.
Excellent.
Better news yet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Evening, Roy Nyedorf, 1815 Oak Ridge Road. The tree committee is focused on basically four issues the last several months. We have consulted with a couple of foresters from the Agricultural Extension Agency for advice. The first issue was the, one of the groves of pines in Heritage Farm Park that's right behind the monument. We were concerned that there might be damage to some of the trees in the front row, but we're okay with the plans for the monument construction. We've been informed that they will take diligent care to put up a fence, a protective fence in front of the tree construction area, and also use, be careful about the equipment that they put in there. Also, looking ahead to the second phase of the project, the walkway into the pines that's proposed will be a low-impact construction. So, that was the first item we've been working with. Second one was also in the Heritage Town Park, the, the three pine stands. I mentioned the one behind the monument. There was concern about the pines maxing out, their age, and being too close together, and the foresters assured us that they were okay, that they will sort of self-select out and will be thinned as they die, which is natural. Also, we've been looking at possible solutions to the buckling of the asphalt walkway in the town park around the birch trees on the walkway. This is a problem because the birch trees were basically planted too close to the walkway, and we ascertained this morning that at least the first step for safety of pedestrians would be to spray paint to highlight the bad areas, and we're looking at several options on where we might suggest the town move forward with that. The, the next item was the Schumard Oaks located along the walkway on Linville Road. They, they needed to be pruned, hard-pruned this past year because of the power lines overhead. Again, a problem, planted too close, they're relatively large-sized species. So, we're recommending that the town, every three years, continue to do this pruning as needed, and also that we get proactive and hire our own tree service instead of relying on Duke Energy to come in and basically butcher as they would. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. You're planning on starting the Treasure Tree Program up again, right, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
Adrian Akronad, 5679 Timber Trace Way. The Parks and Rec met on April 18th in person and by Zoom. We had a citizens' request for a classic car cruisin' to be hosted with Music in the Park. We voted to approve that for the next event. There's an estimation of 60 cars that will be there to coincide with the next Music in the Park series, and that cruisin' is subject to weather-related postponement as well, as the cars will be parked in the lawn area near the amphitheater. Brock recommended an ongoing issue, I'm sorry, he reported an ongoing issue, the damage to the concrete around the amphitheater. The damage has been occurring through unsupervised kids. They're throwing rocks from the landscaping onto the concrete in the stairs. The park is, staffs has witnessed this occurring. It happens during times when the amphitheater is not in use, so Brock has recommended placing some signs in that area that it's off limits when it's not reserved. Heritage Farm Park, as we've noted, or sorry, Brock recommended that a large dirt pile at the entrance be graded, smoothed out, seeded, as opposed to being hauled away at the town's expense. We had a continued discussion and a live demo for the proposed equipment. The networking security at the park, we made a motion to pass that we recommend to the council to move forward that project. Side note on that, that's what I actually do, I design and manage such systems professionally, so that's an area I have extensive expertise in. Happy to, if this is on the agenda of a special council meeting, happy to attend that one. As the mayor noted, it's a complex issue, there's a lot of moving parts, there are a lot of vendors required to put it all together, so I'd happen to give any clarity to that. Is it, if you're not familiar with that, it can be quite confusing and kind of daunting. Let's see, the grand opening for Heritage Farm Park has been noted, that's been delayed, so it will not occur this Saturday. The last, sorry, the first Music in the Park for 2024 occurred and was a success. The estimated attendance was 800 to 900 people. There were no issues or problems reported with that event. A lot of great feedback from it, so we're looking forward to the next one. Reminder of upcoming events, May 11th is the next Music in the Park. There'll be beach music from Special Occasion Band, also the classic car cruisin' will also be there. May 27th is our Memorial Day program, and May 31st is Moving in the Park.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Committee?
Stuart Meese, 1810 Wild Fern Drive. I'm Chair of the Finance Committee. We met three times in working with staff to create what we believe is a very fiscal, responsible budget, and really takes advantage of our unique position. I'll pause one minute to just share what this unique position is for folks and, and one opinion. Triad Business Journal each year in their book of lists, they look at every zip code in the triad. The number one household, median household income is guess who? Oak Ridge, and it's not even close to number two. It was also fourth when you're looking at Charlotte Metro, Raleigh Metro, and Greensboro Metro, which is pretty significant. It's also number one in median housing price in the triad. And Realtor.com between 2021 and 2024 showed that the median selling price of a home in Oak Ridge increased 47% from 2021 to 2024. That all tells me that people want to live here. We're very much an in-demand community, and I think that's a reflection of how council has managed its budget, managed its people, its assets, and staff, and their dedication to carrying out those plans. And so, I think this budget will also continue making an investment in our great town, in the assets that yield very tangible return on income, what we're seeing from our residents. So, whether that's the second phase to the park system, water infrastructure, and to investing in probably our most important asset, which is our staff and our people, I think it's extraordinary, really, when you think about it. No increases since 2017 in a very highly inflationary period post-COVID, which indicate that we are very well positioned for the next 25 years. So, I hope this budget's satisfactory to you all as you consider the next 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Water, any questions before, Water Advisory Committee? We have anything to report from the Water Advisory Committee?
Spencer's not here, but I think most of what was discussed was already covered earlier.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think there's really too many other items that were in that session.
I'm Courtney Benbow-Hartan, and the HBC met regular scheduled meeting on April 17th. We approved a COA for residential fencing at 2100 Oak Ridge Road. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions at all? Thank you. Community Organization Report, the Youth Association, Triad Municipal ABC, they're not due. Oak Ridge Military Academy?
Well, I think they are due.
I'm sorry, ABC due now? I apologize.
You have to move faster.
I apologize. Since you're a major source of revenue, I apologize.
I'm Jim Barbary, I live at 7903 Quiet Place, and this is the Triad Municipal ABC Board Report. Sales were up for the quarter for the triad, but they were down in Oak Ridge, so, folks, you know, come on. And we ranked 14th out of 16 stores. We, the board received a $51,000 check from NC DOT because they're getting, Louisville is getting around about, just like we're getting two, but they're only getting one. And so, upcoming expenses that we're looking at, we're going to have to buy a new truck because one of our trucks is getting really old and not dependable, and we're going to have to do a few pay increases. Inflation has put us in a situation where we have to be competitive with Walmart and other big employers. As Sam mentioned, our latest check was for $45,511. So, for the fiscal year, we received $258,357, which means we met our budget, which was $250,000 for the year. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Historic Preservation?
You mean Military Academy?
I'm sorry, I looked back up, I slipped back up again. Military Academy, Oak Ridge Elementary, sorry about that. I looked up and that's what, what I stopped my eyes on. Okay, another session of public comment, please raise your hand. I'm sorry.
Can I speak for Military Academy?
Certainly, certainly.
Caroline Ruck, 1976 Beeson Road. I'm obviously not officially Oak Ridge Military Academy folks, but I do a lot with, to help support them, and I just wanted to put it out there, some of you are aware, but they are doing ongoing fundraising with the support of the Daughters of the American Revolution Guilford Battle Chapter. And this past Saturday, they had a Derby Tea that they held inside Maple Glade, and their fundraising is specifically for Maple Glade right now. They are looking at nearly a half a million dollar renovation project, which technically is Save Maple Glade. She's in that bad of shape on the exterior, and I really want us to get the word out because she is a beauty, and most people don't even realize she's there. I can't tell you how many folks in Oak Ridge have said, "Where's, where's this house?" You know, and she's not as visible in the summertime especially because of the leaves on the trees, but she was built in 1905, and every fireplace in that house is a piece of art. And I just want to encourage anyone affiliated with the town, I appreciate your volunteering for our town efforts, but if you have, ever have the chance to help volunteer for any of the programs over there, or know anyone that would like to donate to Save Maple Glade, please support the school because she's valuable to Oak Ridge historically as well.
Thank you. And, okay, now, public comment, well, we have a public comment session if you'd like, Sam. Three minutes, state your name and address, and floor's yours.
Sam Andrews, 1829 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. Not something I normally do, but it's been about 18 months since I perform one of these tasks. I just wanted to tell the council, tell the town about the Triad Honor Flights. I flew on one about 18 months ago as a medic. I was very pleased to have an opportunity at the end of April to fly as a medic for one day with them. Triad Honor Flight is headquartered here in, in Greensboro. They are a 501(c)(3) charity. We took 101 veterans with 101 guardians, plus five members of the medical team and bus captains and admin people to run the entire thing. We flew roughly 225 people on a chartered American Airlines to Washington DC. We rallied and had a going-away celebration for the vets at 6:00 a.m. on that Wednesday morning. Once we landed, the DC staff, as they call them, were there for a reception and logistics. So, when we, I say we flew, we moved 220 people. We moved 53 wheelchairs that was in the belly of the beast that had to be offloaded, transported, and loaded onto four buses. We broke the vets into four color-coded, well, four color-coded buses, groups. They do an excellent job. It takes about $600 per person to do this. All the vets fly for free, it's totally done on donations. Costs between $115,000 and $125,000 to do a mission, as they call it. Once we got them there, we went, buses were loaded, we took the vets to the World War II Memorial, Korea, Vietnam Memorial, Lincoln Memorial are all counted together. Then we moved them to the Marine Memorial, then to Arlington National Cemetery. They arranged, the two of the vets were able to participate with the guards at the Tomb of the Unknowns to lay a wreath there. It's just a wonderful thing, and if anyone in the community wants to have a good organization to support, this was an incredible, incredible opportunity. We had three from World War II, larger We had three from World War II, larger group from Vietnam, excuse me, from Korea, and a large number from Vietnam in the Cold War. As I said, it's a really great thing, and I got to meet Marty. Marty is ninety-nine years old. Marty was not just a bombardier in the Eighth Air Force, he was a lead bombardier. And I said, well, what was your plane? He said, I didn't have one, I didn't have a crew. They stuck me in the nose of whichever lead plane was designated, and I was responsible for making sure everybody dropped on target. Marty is, as I said, ninety-nine years old. He actually ended up consulting with the Masters of the Air that Tom Hanks has just produced. He was actually called for technical advice because he's one of the few living experts on a Norden bomb site. But I know I'm over, but if anyone would like to help out, Triad Honor Flight, they're online, they do do a fish fry every spring at the fire station. We support them by providing facility and, and help. So it's a really great organization, the money goes right back out to the vets, and it's really a wonderful, wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak during public comment? Yes, sir, Navarre back, unless he wants to defer. Then, Mr. McClellan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm George McClellan, I live at 2806 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. I just want to say, I think tonight was an extremely productive meeting. I think the fact that we've seen movement done on the wells with the water system, the fact of our continuing commitment for what I envision will be a very fine water tower in back of here. And I also am glad to see the conservation easement decisions. One thing I am also very proud of, and, and that I think y'all are on the right track, is the cameras at the park. As y'all know, I've been a strong proponent of those cameras. We actually, at one point, had it in the state budget that was vetoed by the governor. I think you remember that, Jim? And so I'm glad to see that we've come a long ways. So anyway, just want to let you know, I think y'all did a very fine job, very productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back.
Michael Logan, 5202 Rambling Road, District 3, School Board Member. Thank y'all for what you do, I understand what you do. My understanding, y'all received a letter with School Board Members, leadership of our School Board signing it. We did not vote on that. I have questioned where and who approved and how you received the letter. I have not got my answer on, to that question yet. With that being said, they were asking for money for Oak Ridge Elementary School. I think Oak Ridge Elementary School deserves some money, but it doesn't need to come from Oak Ridge. And why do I say that? Right now, Oak Ridge Elementary receives from the county approximately $696 less than the county average for the local funds. From the state funds, they receive about $550 per student, and each one of these is per student. From the state, or state, they only receive approximately about $100 less per student. Multiply that times six hundred and fifty students, and you will see a lack of funds going to Oak Ridge Elementary. And that is disappointing to me. Why? Because Oak Ridge Elementary does an exceptional job. How do they stand? They're already back to where pre-COVID is. They are ahead. They are a bright and shining star in Guilford County schools. Their scores are exceptional, their performance, their growth actually exceeded growth, and they were already at the top. So to exceed the growth when you're already at the top is a whole lot harder when you're at the bottom. It's easier to jump that bar when it's low, but when the bar is high, they actually exceeded it. So, yes, they do deserve more money, and yes, that money should be coming from the county, it should be coming from the state, and it should be coming from, actually get the federal government out of our schools, we may be doing better overall. So, they do need money. And the community of Oak Ridge supports Oak Ridge Elementary. They have paid for security features at Oak Ridge that the bond money is paying for in other schools. They're trying to purchase playground equipment, and there seems to be some work on finally getting that done, but they're actually, I've asked for the plans and the certifications, and what are the steps for it to take? And we're going on probably the second into the third month for that. And all I just want is the specifications. What does the community have to follow? And I still have not got those in writing. So, yes, Oak Ridge does need, but they are doing fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? I think Caroline beat you. Caroline?
Caroline Ruck, 1976 Beeson Road. I should have stayed up here earlier. I really appreciate all that Town Council does to give their time and efforts to support our town. I was disappointed tonight, as a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I was disappointed that council delayed approving our park security system, especially with so much time and expertise by our co-chair and our deputy clerk was put into this project so as to be ready for council's consideration tonight. I feel like council let them down, but I, I also feel like, from hearing our sheriff's deputies' departments, uh, uh, speech about all the theft that we've had this last, last month, that was even more reason to be proactive in getting on the syst, getting the system implemented. On a more positive note, however, as a previous member of the Historic Preservation Commission for many years, I was thrilled to see the efforts of our Conservation Easement Committee come to fruition, and I really appreciate council supporting this, because these easements will ensure the history of our, of our community, not just structures, as you heard tonight, but open farmland, and that is literally the only way they can be preserved, aside from the town purchasing the land and turning it into a park, which we have successfully done. But I just want to congratulate the, and, and tell the Conservation Easement Committee how much I, as a resident of Oak Ridge, appreciate that, and it's very important to our history. And thank you to Town Council for your support of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Carrie?
Carrie Hammond, 1815 Oak Ridge Road. I just wanted to say thank you very much for approving the grant to us for, uh, the preservation easement on the Sanders Blaylock House. I wanted to mention that there's a connection between the conservation easement through Piedmont Land Conservancy's, Jack Blaylock's property, was part of the Sanders Blaylock original land, and so it's really nice that both of those are being done at the same time. We're preserving a little bit more of the whole, whole area. And as far as skin in the game, we've got more than skin, we've got blood, sweat, and tears. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? Seeing no others, we'll close that period, we'll open up council comments, Mr. Greason. Uh, no comments. Mr. Stone?
Thank everybody for coming out tonight, I just wanted to, on a high level, first of all, Caroline, the, the paint job on Maple Glade is just beautiful. You know, it, it just, go by there and look at, at the house. It's just amazing, and the work that's being done on it, and it does take money, we all understand that, so, I, I totally understand and support that. I appreciate that, that staff and council is taking the time to do our due diligence and do the right communications for these projects. Slow and steady works. Everything doesn't have to be done today. So, I, I understand that, you know, some events have occurred, but they've occurred in the past. Park Security's been on the table since, the best that I can tell, before 2019, and previous councils made decisions based on what they knew at the time to push the project out. We're getting closer, and it, it's a value-add project, and it, it'll get done, but by having these discussions and understanding the numbers and scrubbing them and taking care of the taxpayers' money, we'll get it done the right way. Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
I just, I would just like to thank all the committee members that reported tonight, for their committees, especially the Finance Committee, I've been on the committee previously for four years. I know how much work occurs with that, the diligence that goes into the, the work and the discussion of looking essentially item by item to come up with a budget, so I want to commend them, all the committees, in fact, but, but I know how mu, how hard that job is, and I want to especially single out, and I think Stuart's comments, I don't know if he's still here, I can't, can't see, but I thought his comments earlier were pretty appropriate for the citizens of Oak Ridge and Town Council. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Thanks to staff and all the volunteers who made K-9 Capers such a great success for its 10th anniversary, and again, I just want to remind everyone to come out for the Memorial Day event on May 27th at 10:00 AM here in Town Hall. And I want to also thank our Finance Committee and our Finance Officer, Sam Andrews, and our Town Manager, Bill Bruce. He produced, as always, an excellent budget message, and I just want to say again, get a copy of it or look at it online. Don't just rely on hearsay about, you know, the budget's too high, or the budget's too low, or you like this and you're like that. Read it for yourself. Hard copies will be available here in Town Hall, and of course, it will be posted online. Just some brief context about taxes, I was at a statewide meeting of the North Carolina League of Municipalities about a week ago, and over breakfast one morning, I sat with officials from five different towns. So to make conversation, someone asked what the other towns were planning to do about taxes. Every single town at the table, and some were small and some were large, except me, was planning a tax increase of somewhere between ten and fifteen cents. So, these are, these were full-service towns, so they have much higher tax, uh, tax rates already, but they were planning to go up much higher. I was the only one who said, we were planning to keep the tax rate steady, and the rest of the table couldn't believe how low our tax rate is. Their taxes were all between thirty-five to fifty cents, and they were adding on to that by ten to fifteen cents. So keep in mind, when you look at the budget, that Oak Ridge is among the lowest taxed towns among the 532 towns in North Carolina. We're incredibly fortunate to live here and to experience such great levels of livability and increases in our property values, as, as Stuart Meese was speaking about. He's been an excellent chair of our Finance Committee, and again, I want to thank them. And our low taxes certainly offset a tiny bit the very high tax burden imposed on us by the county, and that's why, for those of you who want lower taxes, we need to direct our requests for lower taxes to the county and the School Board. There's lots of room for, for increased efficiency in the monies that they spend. We also need probably some changes in leadership there, but that's a much bigger task. I also want to say that we were urged last month to work together for the best interests of Oak Ridge, after a meeting in which I did nothing but work for the best interests of Oak Ridge, just as I did again tonight. I think the confusion may arise from people's ideas about what that means. I think it might be said that some people want us to agree more or compromise more. I would like to see that, too, and I would like to see more civility and respect and trust, and that makes for productive discussion in and out of council meetings. So I just want to point out that each of us is probably going to say that we're working for the best interests of Oak Ridge, but my door is always open when the table is first set with respect and trust and civility. In the meantime, I'll remain committed to standing up for what's right for our town and for its future. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, if you can donate blood, please do. We're actually getting noticed a lot. Me and Ashley Royal had a piece with the local Fox News Station where we had a tour of the park. Also, WFMY did an extensive piece on K-9 Capers. It was a good four or five minutes at least where they went through there. So, we are getting noticed, so we are, are, are on the map, as pointed out, our median income and things like that are there. I think it's, in doing due diligence, we are respecting the work of our committees. Again, as I mentioned, we only got the numbers three or four days ago. So to give the respect to that work you've done, I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to take a little time to dig into your work so we can appreciate what you've done. I don't believe anyone up here is not wanting to do the project. So, I, 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 I take a little exception that we are giving it short shrift. By taking our time, we are giving it the respect, you've spent months on it. I think it's appropriate that we get, we are given a little bit of time to consume it, ask questions about it, and also a little bit of time to get the final numbers, because like I said, there's five contractors involved here, so it's a complex project, and since it is a complex project, I think it's appropriate that you allow us some time to digest it. By no stretch of the imagination are we trying to minimize the work you've done. I think in effect, by asking for some time for due diligence, we're trying to give it the respect of the, the effort you put into it, that we just don't do a, 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 a quick look and say, okay, let's go with it. I think, and also it's our duty to take a close look at it, just because it's grant money, doesn't mean it's any less respectful of making sure we spend that money accurately, correctly, and so, so, so I, I think it's perfectly appropriate that we're gonna take a little bit of time to consume this very well-thought-out project, but like I said, it's, it's a complex one, so I'd like to have a couple more days to, to consume it. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. Thank you.